Okay, I have six o'clock. If everyone could please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Christie, could you take roll call, please?
Sure. Fontana, here.
Nakarato, here.
Martin?
Here.
Cretelli?
Present.
Pappenforth?
Present.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Shor?
Here.
Acquorm is present.
Wonderful. And that brings us to the consent agenda. And before I ask for questions and comments, there's something I would like to clarify, and that is the process for approving ordinances on first reading has been revised to allow approval under the consent agenda. The purpose of the first reading is to set the date for the second reading and the public hearing, ensuring the public receives all related information at one time. And for those of you who have attended many of our meetings and first and second readings, the one thing that probably will stick out is typically with the first reading, you have very few people in attendance. It's really a formality, and the idea behind it is to pass it so that the public has an opportunity to weigh in, and that everybody gets the same information at the same time at the second meeting. So, and also the fact that the consent agenda, if you're viewing from the public, it is important to take a look at that because important information is contained on it. Okay, so with that, are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move number four.
To new?
No, I'm sorry, not the number four. Number five, to new business, please.
Okay, so, all right, so very good.
Thank you.
So we'll take number five, and we'll take that to new business. Is there anything else on the consent agenda this evening?
I just had a question about the word map as far as this. It was just a correction on the description, but has, I don't know, with all the new builds, I mean, as far as taking into account population, when does that, when does that adjustment happen for...
So taking in population, that adjustment won't happen again until 2030, when they do the census.
Okay.
But so those numbers are from the 2020 census. But I can get, and I did get the active voter numbers for each ward. Ward one has 1,850, Ward two has 1,798, and Ward three has 1,817. But that does not include any of the newly annexed properties. So I'll get a new updated list probably in July or August, right before election season starts.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to come out and approve the consent agenda except for number five, and we'll bring that down to new business.
Second. So we have a motion from Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. The motion is to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda and to move item number five to new business. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and that brings us to public comment. And this is an opportunity for the council to hear from our community. Public will be limited to three minutes each during citizen comments. There will be a clock that will show up on the screen that will let you know how much time you have. Out of fairness to everyone, I'm going to limit everyone to that three minutes. A council may not respond to your comment this evening. Rather, they may take your comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions will be directed to the appropriate department for follow-up. And if necessary, the city administrator will correct the public record. And tonight, first off, we have Adam Martinez.
Thank you very much, and good evening to you guys. First of all, I would like to discuss the Adelman property. As you know, you had Mrs. Clark's attorney on one of the meetings. I couldn't remember which one. There is, there is trash alongside the tent of Mrs. Adelman's place. They're camping out. More people are coming. And, and I have not seen the police over there, and I think that you guys should be on top, top, top of it because it is a nuisance issue. And I think that, that you guys should be aware of that. Secondly, I, I was in downtown town last week. I have not seen hardly any people in downtown. There, it has hit, it has been slow. I think that you guys should rescind the street closures because it is not helping the business community. I have talked to business owners. I have talked personally. My mom has a business in downtown. Her, the elderly folks don't have access to downtown. They, they can't commute around downtown. And in essence, and that street should be open for traffic. And I don't know what the purpose is of the street closures, why you guys, why you guys are doing this because COVID is, COVID is over. And, and in essence, I think it's very disingenuous, the way you guys disrespect this community by not giving the people what they want. In essence, I have started a petition. In essence, the people that I have talking to don't, don't want the closures. And I think you should have listened to Mrs. Fontana. I think you, you guys should have put a pause on it. I, I don't think, I don't think that it, it is helpful for the community, community. Sales, sales have gone, gone down. Tourism has gone down. In essence, it's not going to do anything for the, for the business community. And I've seen an op-ed in the newspaper, well, maybe we should have F Street permanently closed. Well, you guys stuck all the things in these people's heads who are, who are for it. And this town is going to go into a recession if you guys don't stop what you're, what you're doing. Because it, it is hurting the community. And one last, one last thing. I would like to thank Mrs. Dooms for addressing her city employee, Mrs. Tahanovich.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you. Okay, and then next up, we have Lisa Martin.
Hi, I am here representing Chaffee County Public Health, and we are Chaffee Storytelling Initiative. It's information only, so relax. We have received a grant, a two-year grant from Denver Foundation called Belonging Colorado. And this grant is given to, has been given to 15 cohorts throughout the state. And that, the reason for the grant is to enhance the sense of belonging in communities. And so what we're doing is intergenerational. I'm sorry, I should have taken notes, but, so the sense of belonging is very important for health because it creates a sense of belonging. It makes you feel psychologically safe. It helps you have a resilient community or a resilient in oneself. And when you have a sense of belonging, you feel less stressed, and you feel like you can accomplish more things. Our population here in Chaffee County, as you know, we have a lot of older folks and a lot of younger folks. And so we're working on intergenerational effort for belonging. And what that means is we're going to work with groups of intergenerational people to bridge divides, help people understand each other, you know, build trust. And this work is going to culminate in public art. So I have been working with Bill Almquist and Tina Grammon from the Arts, Creative Arts District. And just to make sure we know what we're doing as far as policies and codes and getting their recommendations. So when you think of public art, the thing that most people think of are murals, and that's probably what we'll lean toward. Because we'll hire two artists to help the participants put into art what their shared vision of belonging is. So that's the idea. I gave you a handout. Our website has a lot of detailed information on what we're kind of expecting participants to do and what we're expecting artists to do. And we are incredibly excited for this project. We've met with people in BV and Pontius Springs as well. And it seems like people are starting to rally. We're starting to get a lot of applications. So tell your friends or sign up yourself. All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have anyone online?
Not that has raised their hands.
Okay, very good. Then I'm going to go ahead and close down public comment. And that will bring us to new business. And the first item we have is an open space fee waiver request from the Chaffee Housing Trust for development at Third and M Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm bringing this forward to you per of conversations I've had with Mayor Shor and others with council. When the Chaffee Housing Trust came forward to develop the condos at Third and M Street, they, at that time, requested waivers regarding the building fees and other fees associated with vacating the street. At the time, the fees for open space, which are due when property goes through the condominiumizing process, if that's right. So that's the process that they're on now. They're requesting the, the fees for open space be waived. Those fees would amount to $25,000. It's $5,000 per unit. There are five units that have been built. So the, again, the staff was requested to bring this fee waiver forward to council for your consideration. The information is provided for that.
And I can maybe provide a little additional context because this was brought forward with a very different council sitting up here. The mayor at the time was, was Mayor Wood. The mayor pro tem was Councilmember Brown Kavasek. And at the time, we had all come into office and really a driving force behind what we were trying to accomplish was getting more affordable workforce housing built. And it was taking more time than we had hoped for, and so we reached out to Reed with the Housing Trust. And we started a whole process where we looked at a variety of parcels around the city. This was the one that checked the most boxes. And I have confirmed with Mayor, former Mayor Wood, former Councilmember Brown Kavasek, along with former Councilmember Casper, Councilmember Cretelli and I, because we were all part of that original council. And very much the intention was to remove all the barriers to allow them to build so that we could demonstrate and show our commitment to workforce affordable housing in the city. So everyone that I spoke to was on the same page. The recollection was all that we had, we had all agreed to waive and remove these fees and remove barriers to make it so that it could be provided at really affordable prices. So I just wanted to provide that additional context because very different groups sitting up here today. So we'll go to questions now. Who'd like to begin?
I don't have a question, but what I would like everybody to remember is that we used to always get requests for tap fee waivers. And we can't do that either because we, you know, we have a budget that we have to stick within. And so surprises like 25 grand, you know, 10 years ago might not have been a problem. In 2025, they're a problem. We've got a super tight budget. This is not in the budget. It's a big surprise to this current council. Thank you.
I would love to hear from Reed about the units themselves.
That would be excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to consider this. If I may, I just want to step back. Mayor Shor, thank you so much for that explanation of historically what had happened. And there's so much more to this story. Back in 2010, we were considering this parcel for development. And some of you may remember, I was two years into being Executive Director of the Chaffee Housing Trust. And you may remember, there was a great recession that was happening, and funding and financing froze. And so that discussion ended. Fast forward to, I think it was around 2018, we started this discussion, and I started working with Bill Almquist to come up with a way to make this parcel work. We were able to get through multiple processes of lot land elimination and then conveying the property. At the time, we agreed to pay $49,000 for sewer replacement or deviation to make the project work. And since then, we've taken on all the costs of developing this particular parcel. There were some unfortunate things that happened with Indy Dwelled Builder. Their factory went insolvent during the COVID crisis. And so we had to step in and basically run that factory to get our project completed. And so here we are, the last seconds of the game, and lo and behold, I learned that there's an outstanding potential open space fee, which I thought had been waived initially because through this partnership with the city, we said everything we can do to reduce barriers, that's what we need to do. So here we are, the project's finished. We've got two folks who are living in there, are two different households, including grandma raising her grandkids, works at the hospital, someone else who works in the health industry. And they're ready to go to closing, and we need the condo plat signed and executed so that we can get them into homeownership as opposed to currently renting. And of course, we've got other folks showing interest in those units. So there are five units plus an ADU. Four of those are being sold at prices from anywhere from 205,000 to 218,000 for a three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,150-square-foot home. And then we've got two units that are going to be held as rentals. The sales go at 80% AMI, and the rentals go, are going to be 100% AMI. This is intentional so that we can buy down the remaining mortgage, and then we can sell those two units. All the funds that the CHT was able to garner for this project have been exhausted and then some. We're actually paying out of pocket to cover additional costs just to get to this point. We don't have any additional. We don't have any additional funds to cover this particular expense. In fact, we don't have enough money to run our operations, but all of our projects are moving forward. And so we've done everything we can to get to this point. And we'd really appreciate that reciprocation from city council to make this project finally close and happen.
I have a question for Reed. How is the CHT funded when you're receiving your funds for these projects? Are those grants? Are those private people funding these or to move forward with your projects?
Sure, all of the above, by hook or by crook, whatever funds that we can raise. There are some monies from the state. We get a $40,000 a year grant from the state. And then we ask for matching funds from local jurisdictions. So the Chafee County Community Foundation grants in place of asking directly to the city. We go to them for that funding, those matching dollars. That's a requirement with those state dollars. We go to grants, we ask for donations and then developer fees on our projects. Unfortunately, this particular project with everything that I described, there is no developer fee to be realized. It's actually costing us money, but we're going to get it done. And so all our future projects, we have to keep moving forward and pulling small fees from each of those to cover our costs. Right now, we are three staff. We're very overburdened with the work at hand, but we've got great opportunities and everyone's just working extra time to make it happen.
Do you have people in, you're saying you have people ready to go into every one of these units currently?
Right now, we've got, so we entered into a partnership with the Chafee Housing Authority to manage all of our rentals because they have the software and they have the experience to do that and just efficiency. And so the person managing that, Becky Longberg, has renters lined up and then Claudia on our staff has buyers who are in process. So we're looking to get all those units occupied completely by June 1st.
That's quick. I do have two more questions.
But we'll come back after, if anyone else wants to go. Everyone will get all your questions answered though.
Well, you have any questions then?
My, I fully support this, so I guess that's my only comment about it.
I don't have any questions. I would just say, we weren't on the board when all this was, you know, put into play. But here in the background and kind of backing up kind of what some of the members that were on that board, P T Wood, I'm fully behind, yeah, just kind of, you know, backing what they said they would do back then. So I'm on board with it myself.
It's kind of, I suppose for Kristi, why did we, why did this not, or Reed, or Mayor Shore, why did we not get this settled earlier?
I cannot answer that. This was before my time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I don't know why it wasn't brought up earlier. I provided to you all the documentation that was in the file regarding everything. So I honestly don't know. I wasn't.
We had a different administrator. We had a different planning director at the time.
But they agreed to it then?
Well, the council did. The council gave them direction and around, we wanted this to happen. We wanted to remove the barriers, the financial barriers and to do anything and everything. And if you read the letters from former Mayor Wood, yeah, you read those, talked very much about that. And so, you know, we sit up here and we give policy direction and there were some changes and stuff like that happens. But from my perspective, you honor the spirit and intent of whatever the agreement is.
Sure. Can I ask a question of staff maybe? Trying to figure out how to phrase this, but since it's a fee waiver, is there any way, but we didn't know it was coming, is there any way that it was budgeted for in this year's budget that we're going to be losing the $25,000 that we were counting on from this condominiumization?
Amy's shaking her head. Kind of hard, well, so the 25, yes, but give me just a second. So was the $25,000 specifically budgeted for? Amy's going to say no. And I will also counter with the, there is a lot of unbudgeted liability that we have in our, in our projects right now. And so these fees that we get are, they balance the ledger, right? So this $25,000, probably not. We probably didn't say, oh, this is owed for Third and M. We have outstanding obligations in the open space arena that these fees would have gone towards. So is that fair, Amy? Okay, thank you.
Literal future project work.
It is literal current, what we have said we would do work. So yes, it's, but it's not in the budget that we now have to figure out where to get the $25,000 from, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
That was part of my question is that is, so if we take the $25,000 because they have to be paid some, from somewhere, from within our budget, that $25,000 is just going to be a general ledger adjustment? And we won't be able to spend that on future project or the projects that have already been budgeted this year? So open space loses that, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And we approved that budget last year?
That is correct.
I will say the Housing Authority is our most successful affordable housing program that we have in this county.
Sorry, Housing Authority or Housing Trust?
Sorry, sorry, the Housing Trust. Yes, big mess up there. So the Housing Trust, that is our most successful, in my opinion. I have successfully gone through the program. They do get people who are low income to become homeowners. Establishing that homeownership opens up a lot of doors. And it's not something that you can do in Salida or throughout this whole county if you were working at low income levels. I understand that this $25,000 could be used for projects that we have coming up. However, housing, we are in a housing crisis. I've said this many times, it's a crisis. We are not going to just, putting this $25,000 towards a park is not going to build houses. The Housing Trust builds houses. They make it work. And I fully support this fee waiver.
I guess I'll just chime in because I was also in one of these seats. Could have been this one when we were discussing this. Yeah, maybe I was on the left. But there is no surprise here. We knew going in to do business with the Housing Trust meant a requirement to waive as much as we possibly, everything. I mean, that this doesn't happen without our participation in that way as a city. That was probably the first, the first overall disclaimer on this negotiation, if you'd like to call it that, of this project, was that in order for this to happen, was for these to be waived. It's not a surprise to hear Reed say that there is no money to pay. There is no $25,000, just like, oh, we got this because we didn't have to pay. Every penny goes into this to make this project a reality and then some. As we've just heard, I remember being a part of trying to just, trying to figure out which city-owned land we could use to the betterment. So we're talking about parcels that won't be anything very likely if we didn't go with this project. We're talking about, I think it was just like a pile of dirt in a weird triangle off the side of Third Street. Right, yeah, there was, I mean, there was, there was other options. We could have had a couple off of, right on the border of the golf course, which would have been.
To war.
Yeah, yeah, we would have certainly casting shade on hole nine would have been just, yeah, a big issue. We didn't really have, you know, it was really just making that parcel work because we, knowing full well, it wouldn't be anything without this. So yeah, we did sacrifice a lot monetarily to make this happen. I think we all have. I think that that's the understanding of what it takes to make, to bake affordability into housing, especially in this current market. It just doesn't happen without that. It's just all the more awkward that it's already built, people are already living in it. And we like have come around to being like, hey, looks like there's still a balance. Because just, I just remember that very clearly, you know, day one was, you know, we need as much help financially as humanly possible to make this happen or else it won't.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree that the work the Chafee Housing Trust does in our community is excellent. The one thing I would counsel or speak to council about is that unfunded fee waivers are, they do hit our general fund. And we are working to make sure that we manage that appropriately. So I am, while I think this, well, council will make decision with regards to this fee waiver, but I would coach council that we should really be judicious in the way that we utilize the city's funds. So in the future, we would want to understand this a little bit clearer. And I think the ask from staff is that if this is going to occur in the future, that it happens early in the process and they understand it so they can be budgeting appropriately for it. And I would also think that if we're working with nonprofit organizations, we should encourage them to get grant funds to cover fees like this. Thank you.
And I agree with all of that. What I would say is that, you know, we're talking about $25,000. It's not a trivial amount, I get that. But I also look at what was created there and what that's going to do for the community. And I think on the subject of fee waivers, I think we're all pretty much in agreement as we move forward that we really have to draw the line on things moving forward. But this is something where the conversation was had, what, seven years ago? Six, seven years ago? And I just feel like we have to, we have to honor it. They moved forward in this process with that understanding. And as nonprofits don't have a tremendous amount of margin cushion to work with. So anyway, that's, I'll just leave it there. Yeah, go ahead.
I agree with that as well. I would like to support Chafee Housing Trust. And I know that as a nonprofit and three staff, you all are working your tails off. I also am starting to, it's not, it's not yet a pattern, but I think you can see how things are tightening up. And there, there are several instances of having to be reactive instead of proactive. And as things tighten up with our city budget, it would be nice if there weren't any more surprises like this. So I would just love to see if there's some extra time on top of all of your other tasks that you have to do, that there be some kind of audit. And I don't know if you have any other projects in the pipeline for which, you know, these kinds of surprises might come up for either the city or other entities. But just taking some time to recognize that the purse strings are tightening and that nobody's in favor of these surprises coming our way. But I do want to support the intention seven years ago. You know, I'm always the first to complain that nobody was forward thinking about housing when it needed to be being thought about. So I do appreciate that everybody in this, involved in this was thinking about housing seven years ago and trying to make that happen. So I do want to support that and honor that intention.
I have one more.
Yeah, okay.
One more thought. And this goes back to the finance committee meeting yesterday. And I think that's why Council Pappenforth and Treasurer Gilling and I are having this. You know, where we're, and Council Nakarado with the budget. I mean, that is, we all want to support the CHT. It's successful. It is absolutely needed and wonderful, along with the city budget is absolutely needs to be successful. And we have to help our finance committee, not committee, finance department, do that to the best of our abilities up here. And so waiving fees is very difficult and that makes it even harder for them. But I understand that this was way before our budget and our time. So I get both of those things. That's why we are, you know, you know, Amy does a very good job at sticking to the budget. And she expects us to do the same. So I understand both sides of that.
And I would ask what Council Member Nakarado asked. Give us a clue what else is coming up, you know, so we can get all these surprises out of the way. That said, Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer a motion.
Okay.
And that is to approve open space fee waiver request from Chafee Housing Trust for development at Third and M Street.
Second.
So we have a motion from Council Member Pappenforth, seconded by Council Member Martin. The motion is to approve the open space fee waiver request from the Chafee Housing Trust development at Third and M Street. Further discussion?
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your comments. And certainly all future projects, I'm going to sit down with staff and make sure that we have the budget nailed down and we know what all the expenses are. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us to Resolution 2025-19, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, approving citizen appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission pursuant to Section 2-7-10 of the Salida Municipal Code. You're on the spot.
I'm on the spot. Good evening. These are basically two reappointments of existing HPC members who are graciously offered to continue serving. Keith Krebs is our current chair and Patrick Reagan, who's been around for a while. So that's about it.
Questions for Carolyn?
No.
Looks pretty straightforward.
You obviously work with them. And they're doing, doing well?
Yeah, they have, we recently had a little public open house work session about updating the historic survey plan. And they both have a lot of knowledge about Salida and about not only the historic district. I think some people don't realize that the HPC is actually charged with sort of promoting and protecting all of the historic resources of the city, not just acting on applications brought about the downtown district. So we're working on sort of a strategic plan for that kind of effort and more to come.
Was there a big attendance at the?
There was not. I mean, they have traditionally met in the afternoon. So we started at four and someone, the people that were here mentioned that it would be better to have in the evening. So we'll have another public workshop in the evening when more people could come later in the summer.
I just can't say enough great things about Keith Krebs. He's such a good guy and, you know, should be volunteer of the year, like every year in a row. And is incredibly knowledgeable about historic preservation too.
And I would really echo that and say that, I mean, on these boards, the more institutional memory you can build and hold on to, the better they function. And I mean, I think about Commissioner Wood. He spent, I think, I believe, a decade on the planning commission and how much that brings to the table. So if they want to re-up, I'm just really, really happy and that they would agree to continue to serve this community. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-19, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, approving the following appointments to Historic Preservation Commission. One, Keith Krebs, regular member term to expire May 20, 2028. And two, Patrick Reagan, regular member term to expire May 20th, 2028.
Second.
So we have a motion from Council Member Cretelli, seconded by Council Member Martin. And the motion is to approve Resolution 2025-19, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, approving the following appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. Number one, Keith Krebs, regular member term to expire May 20th, 2028. And number two, Patrick Reagan, regular member term to expire May 20th, 2028. Further discussion?
Nakarado?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. And then moving on to Resolution 2025-20, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, accepting the devolution of certain property from the Colorado Department of Transportation to the City of Salida and approving an intergovernmental agreement to effect. to effect such property devolution.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This kind of got put together a little bit late. CDOT's Transportation Commission just met on Thursday of last week and approved, finalized everything on their end, so this is really the last step in the process. So, just a brief recap on this, this process of what we've gone through. Back in November last year, we had a work session where we really went over the details of the potential benefits of going through a devolution process, essentially taking ownership of State Highway 291, becoming a city road, what the fiscal considerations were, and kind of the grant projects and funding that are currently in place, as well as the other impacts. And then, we kind of recapped that when council approved Resolution 2025-13 that entered into the intergovernmental agreement with CDOT that allowed them to go take it to their Transportation Commission. And so, this is really the, the last and final step, the resolution to accept the devolution and approve the intergovernmental agreement. So, after that, all gets signed by the mayor, assuming it passes or whatnot. There will be a fund transfer from CDOT to the city in the amount of $223,120. And then, could start planning a downtown block party, I guess. Anyways, I'd be glad to answer any other questions or, I guess, go over some of the past history on this.
Questions for David this evening?
I just feel like I need to kind of speak further, you know, for the, for kind of my demographic here in town about the, how you, we're saying, I hear, I guess I'm confused. De-evolution is how it's pronounced? Is it just like a D?
Devolution. It's not a word I've ever used before either. I think it's devolution, I think is how they.
When I'm researching, I've been seeing so many different ways to say it. But anyway, yeah, I'm just, I gotta state my, you know, my concerns with it, or just kind of feel like, you know, I feel like our city resources and time could be better used than in other, other areas of, of the, of the, you know, the infrastructure and roads and sidewalks and, and I just, the time that this would kind of take away and resources that would kind of take away from kind of keeping up with what we have going on now and, and the current state of our, you know, of the city and budget-wise and all this kind of stuff. I just don't, I can't really get on board with it myself, and that's kind of really all I have to say.
Okay, they respond to that?
Sure. I did want to just point out, currently, there is an IGA with CDOT, so the city is actually responsible for the maintenance of 291 currently, whether it's winter maintenance or pothole maintenance, and also outside of what they call the road prism, so the pavement section, like, the sidewalks already fall within the city's code and responsibility. CDOT doesn't take care of sidewalks and fronting, even though it's their right-of-way, it's within our jurisdiction to do the maintenance on them. So, I just wanted to provide that information in response.
Yeah. As far as the way the partnership then with CDOT as it is currently stands, maybe you could speak to that as far as how expeditious things can get done, how maybe CDOT as an organization maybe potentially slows things down?
Yeah, there's certain, definitely certain processes that, they have their own codes and policies on how things need to be handled. It affects other departments, not just mine, but, for example, on the development side, if there is an access desired for the fire station. It took six, nine months to get through an access permit and a lot of back and forth, some additional engineering requirements that went in for that. Every time a new water service or sewer service needs to be tapped for a property, it's the same process. They're definitely quicker at processing those permits. It's a little bit more routine, but those sort of permits take time. Even, I know Diesel just mentioned he is in the process of filling out a permit to do the Fibark Parade. So, like, every parade that uses State Highway, there's traffic control regulations, components, paperwork that needs to be developed and costs that are incurred by the organizers to comply with those sort of regulations. Certainly, like, any sort of, if there was a patio or outside expansion of a business, that's something that's, again, it kind of falls under CDOT, whether it's the type of vehicles that use the roadway, things like that. So, speed studies, speed signs, all the, all those things could be governed internally, so.
Quick follow-up, and then I'll turn it over to you. So, you mentioned six to nine months for the fire station, that whole process. Wow. How long would you envision it taking if it was done under devolution?
Well, we still, for impacts within our public right-of-way, we still required an engineered plan set and whatnot, but a couple-week turnaround typically, unless there are some real issues with what's being submitted.
So, this would be a real benefit for developers, say, who?
I would think so.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I'll just add what I think is one more benefit, which is for our public transit system, where we did have an issue, I hope I'll get it right, somebody can correct me if not, there was an issue when we talked about the transit stops for the Mountain Valley Shuttle and not being able to easily establish a stop there on First Street because it is a state highway and not a city street.
Yeah, we were even just today mentioning how it's kind of tricky to parallel park in front of City Hall here, and it might be one of those things where we could widen out the curb five feet, might narrow up the sidewalk a little bit, but allow for a much more comfortable spot for visitors to park and not, you know, be concerned about their door getting ripped off or whatnot, so.
Devin, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about deliveries downtown? You know, if I'm running a bar, which I'm not, you know, I'm going to have a beer truck come and deliver my goods, right?
Yeah, I don't know how much delivery truck drivers pay attention. I, I've seen, yeah, I don't know if I have a whole lot to comment on as far as if that would change or not.
They're still going to get downtown some way.
They can still deliver.
Oh, yeah, so even truck traffic, no matter what size of trucks or whatnot, types of trucks, gravel, delivery, whatever, as long as it's in-town deliveries, our code allows, I believe, for any sort of uses for in-town deliveries.
It seems logical.
Yeah. I don't know it verbatim, but I know we talked about that at the work session.
Thank you.
Yes.
You had talked about the maintenance on there and that the city was responsible. Isn't it where the city gets paid for that maintenance and the plowing? So, we wouldn't get that anymore? We'd have to do it all with no compensation?
That's correct. There isn't, although the man, people power effort that goes into it is essentially the same, there would be, you would, we, you're correct in that regard. I want to say, snow plowing is probably in the $10,000 to $15,000 realm during the winter months, so it's not.
Time or just one time?
The entire winter, it's kind of in that ballpark. Sometimes it's less, sometimes it's a little more, kind of depends on the winter. So, that would not be coming our way.
And the shoveling?
That's, what's that?
Shoveling also?
Uh, that, they wouldn't consider that reimbursable expense, it's really just clearing it out of the traffic way. That's part of what that fiscal impact in that $223,000 is supposed to offset is a certain period of time to help transition. There are also, and I don't have the number on here, and I should have brought it, but HUTF is funding that we get from the state based off of lane miles of road. And Amy, do you recall, I know that the HUTF money actually will be going up because we'll have additional lane miles of road. Yeah, right now, we get around, I think, $220,000. It might go up by, I believe it's like 3%, so that might be, what, $6,000, $7,000 additional revenue? So, yeah, there's kind of a little bit of balancing, nothing huge, though, as far as cost implications, that, at least that I'm seeing. And certainly, just a recap also with the infrastructure, some of the more expensive pieces of infrastructure would be the segment from Highway 50 to the City Hall here, which is currently under reconstruction via revitalizing Main Street grant funding. We got $2 million from the state for that project, and there's a couple million going into reconstruction from almost Rush Drive up to past Marvin Park. That's almost done with the design process and is scheduled for construction next year. So, much of it's going to be pretty much a new roadway, and the downtown traffic signal, which is, is about a million-dollar project almost eight years ago, that's also a good benefit that at least the infrastructure is new there as well, because those are kind of like three of the main sections, and much of it will be new, which is good. If we were taking over, I'd say, a 40-year-old roadway, you know, I think we'd probably, at least I'd certainly look at it differently.
They're going to maintain the light still, correct?
Correct.
The traffic light?
Mm-hmm.
Forever?
For, that's, that was part of the original action back in Resolution 13, is they have IGAs with other jurisdictions to do the maintenance. We would have to pay them, so if they had to send a light technician here to change the program. I mean, they actually, we're here yesterday, they added seven seconds to the through-green signal just because there is starting to be more and more congestion, just more traffic, and.
That's why I could get through it.
Wanted to take a closer look at. So, they were just here yesterday, working on it, and that sort of thing would continue.
Thank you.
I know what the updates that's going on with Oak Street, the, the part that's already been completed and the one that's getting ready to break ground here in June. Would that, was that reimbursed? Were we reimbursed for that?
Correct. That's the, the revitalizing Main Street program, it's about $2 million, or it was a $2 million grant, it's about two-thirds complete, and so they're going to be starting here, and I think the city just put out a press release on that on June 3rd, that the rest of that construction will continue around the corner.
I was, you know, I was supposed to want to state, you know, that I can see, you know, the, you know, the, the benefits of, you know, taking over two miles of state, bring it into the, into the city jurisdiction, but at the same time, it's, it's hard to kind of see the, you know, the turnaround, because, you know, I know, one of the big things that started this with me was, was, you know, slowing down the, the big truck traffic downtown. And so, I mean, I'm just going to say that this is gonna, you know, this is going to drive prices up of materials around town, it's gonna, every, every time you want to redo an asphalt roadway, every time we want to do concrete, you know, the prices of those, those materials are going to go up, because if we shut down the main, you know, roadway that they deliver these materials to and from these, these, these plants that make these materials, that bring material back and forth from each other, if they have to redirect themselves and go, you know, however far, 20 miles up, 20 miles back, that's going to drive prices up of, you know, maintenance of materials on.
So, I had an opportunity to hear Eric Miller, he spoke at the What's Up Salida on Thursday, and Eric did a lot of the work around this, and so, I'm a little confused by like the 20 miles, because I know based on the research he did, the price of a gallon of diesel, he estimated the, the, the cost in time and, and gas was going to be pretty, pretty small. I mean, I don't have the exact numbers, but they were like, you know, 10, 12 bucks is what he was talking about, and maybe adding eight to 10 minutes, like, on a round trip. And I'm not saying that doesn't have an impact, but I feel like that could be passed on to a consumer relative.
I mean, the 20 miles was just kind of, was a ballpark period, I haven't gone out and driven, kind of what I would think would need to happen to make sure the trucks can get to their destination safe for everybody and not causing problems in other areas of the, of the county or the city. I don't know what his route was.
We, we could ask him.
The way he kind of went about it, but the safest route would be, they would go all the way back out, 291 to 285, back in through Poncha, onto 50, and then back in and turn up to go towards United or Hard Rock, that'd be the safest route, because cutting through those back roads on a, you know, 60-foot end dump or belly dump diesel truck with people that ride bikes, people that walk those routes by, you know, by Franz Lake would probably be your quickest route over through, and, you know, it's, it's adding 20 more turns into your, you know, I drove it in my dump truck, and it, it, it takes up, you know, substantial amount of resources to, to do those routes. And right now, the quickest one's through, and, you know, we're all talking about, you know, wanting to save money, make downtown better, and, you know, bring in more, you know, tourism, bring in more money down to downtown, but in the long run, that, we're going to make more money down there, but it's going to go, you know, it's still going to drive prices up in, in other areas. So, I just, and the way, I mean, just putting more, more of our resources and people that work for the city, more time into that, right now, I just, I don't see the real, the great benefit for filling out four permits a year for, for a parade, or, you know, now we're going to have downtown businesses, they're going to, that live on First Street, they're going to be like, oh, well, can we push out into the street and take up that parking spot, which is a safety hazard for me for that route anyway, because, I mean, that's a direct route in town from out of town, cars are moving through there pretty quickly, you know, stoplights going to stop them, they're going to be blasted with exhaust, you know, F Street, at least we close it down, people are, are a little more considerate going through F Street, they're slower for the most part, see kind of all kinds of, I just don't see, I see, I see the, the, you know, the negatives outweigh the positives for me.
Actually, wait, I'll come back to you in a sec.
I was driving down Oak Street the other day, and with the new construction last summer, and then again this summer, it's just really apparent that our city has changed considerably from when it wasn't questionable to have that highway running through town. I would venture to say that very development is, is what has benefited some of those organizations that you're talking about, the, the vast amount of development in our community. And so, we're, we're now driving through town there in that section of Oak Street, as well as First Street, it's very much, you're very much within the city. And it's, it's just no longer appropriate to have, like, a highway ripping through the middle of town, in my opinion. You know, in the 80s, when there was tumbleweeds blowing down the street, no problem having, having trucks and everyone use this highway through town, but I just don't think it's appropriate anymore. It needs to be a city street, we need to have access to managing it, we need to have access to our own traffic regulations on it. And I think, I think it will do a lot for town to be able to have that and to make it part of the city rather than this separate state-managed section running through the middle of our city, which we have no control over.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, clarify that there, we do have detours during the construction for trucks, correct? And then, as far as the limitations on what kinds of trucks can come through, this is, this resolution is not setting any of those standards. We are just, like you said, Councilmember Nakarado, we're not going to be able to have the option to set those standards if we do pass this resolution, but we aren't necessarily setting those standards tonight.
Correct. I mean, some communities have designated truck routes in their code, and that'd be something Salida could consider, you know? It doesn't have to say all streets have this size or smaller vehicle. Council certainly could approve a truck route, whatever it may be. Maybe it's, I'm not going to throw out any streets because I don't want to cause a problem, but it could be whatever, you know?
Yeah. Smart.
Yeah.
My, my thought were, I know you said that there was some research done on the time and the material, or the time and the diesel and the such that would be passed on to the consumer. Well, in that case, the consumer is our citizens who are building homes in our community, and that pushes the prices up on those homes, because they're, they're getting that gravel delivered, they're getting that concrete delivered, and so it pushes prices up, and after a while, we keep pushing prices up because of these things, you know, it, stuff becomes less affordable. things, you know, it, stuff becomes less affordable.
I guess my point was in, in talking to Mr. Miller was the, the data he shared, I'm sure he'd be happy to provide it to council. I mean, obviously it won't be tonight, but he could do it later, described it as negligible. So, I mean, negligible, negligible can mean different things to different people, but.
I just, I just, there's no mention of trucks or routes or any of that in what this, in, in writing in this. So none of that is being contemplated in any of this.
Right.
So I think that's also like super important, like we're not saying like this means that there's now a truck reroute because it's literally, there's not, there's not even the word truck any, like anywhere in here. So maybe that's for another day. I have something that, you know, just a question about what's actually in writing. So the, um, the subject of a reversion from the quiet claim deed, if it were to be, something would be used for the not outside of transportation purposes, would that, would that include the idea of, you had mentioned earlier about like a business like patio space along that, would that be grounds for reversion? Is Nina on the call?
No, I
Nina is on the line.
You know, it might be a little, probably require a little bit of due diligence to understand that terminology, probably from a legal perspective. I don't know how to respond to that.
Nina, did you hear the question?
Was that number four of that IGA? Is that what you're looking at?
Well, it's just under the proposed resolution number three, one of the whereas's as far as
Oh, okay, gotcha. I was looking.
90 days.
Are there many whereas's?
Yeah, under the many whereas's, probably the third from the, fourth from the bottom. Yeah, it's that, it doesn't even, doesn't even look like that. That's just exhibit, I'm just looking at Exhibit A.
Yeah, I made it go to Exhibit A.
Yeah. It's all, it's at, it's the last page. Oh, yeah. And it's that first one at the top of the last page, just, just that provision of automatic reversion. It's, it's all the way at the bottom.
All the way?
Yes. Oh, oh, but yeah, but you're not in the, sorry, I'm not getting the individual piece of it. So yeah, that one, there we go.
It's Page 66, right?
Right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, that top part.
There we go.
I control that version. So yeah, usually do a quick claim deed if you want to indicate the change in ownership of the right of way. It's usually just done by a quick claim deed. It's a reversion if the property is not used for transportation. And they're just saying that this has to continue to be used as, as a roadway, otherwise it'll automatically go back to C dot.
Nina, do you have, do you see any concerns if we were to have business owners move into the parking spaces similar to what we do on F Street was Councilmember Crutelli's initial question?
Sorry.
I mean, it would still be a roadway, right? There'd still be vehicle
It would still be used for transportation purposes. I do hesitate about that happening. Um, we would want to work with David and, um, you know, roadways, you know, it should, you should continue to use them for, you know, driving in for parking purposes, but um, we could always talk about that in the future, but it would, that would not trigger, a temporary use of that parking space would not trigger the reversion as far as I'm reading it. That's not, because the road would still be used for transportation purposes. I just wouldn't recommend doing that on, well, at more than a temporary basis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Appreciate that. Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to add that we're not hearing any opposition from the public on this issue either. So just thinking about our job to represent the people of the city of Salida. There's been a lot of time here and we're not hearing that opposition, I just want to point out, so.
That is weird, actually.
It's, yeah.
He complains about everything.
Right. It's not like, yeah.
I mean, I pretty much know how it's going to go. I'm, I'm just stating my issues with it, I know.
Yeah.
And you may, you, I mean, I'm, I'm glad you're here and that you've been able to advocate the way you have and make the points and, you know, I think it's
I've talked to my other trucking buddies and, you know, and the, and the companies that, you know, use those routes quite often and none of them are here to, you know, to help, help, help with the, you know.
Yeah, and I would just add that when the time comes, it would be important for all of us to hear from, from them so that it's not just coming from you who works in that industry.
Yeah.
Because the reason for being here is to represent the people of the city of Salida.
And there'll be opportunities in the future.
There'll be a full, like separate conversation about it.
Yeah.
Outside of this.
I don't know if it's actually been, has it been, I mean, how has it, has, has, the only way the community would know that this is happening is, would be to read where, where has it been, you know, announced to the community?
Well, I mean, it's been discussed, for example, at What's Up Salida where you'll have, you know, 60 to 80 business owners and people from other organizations. You know, I mean, people that are following meetings, conversations and, you know, I mean, I think about how many people over the years have approached me about too not how much they, they were really uncomfortable with the volume of heavy truck traffic down there. And it wasn't anything like I was going out and soliciting it and people would, on an unsolicited basis, have brought it up. And that's been a fairly consistent theme over the last seven and a half years that I've sat up here. But I mean, there'll be further conversations, yeah.
This was, also we discussed this in November, I believe was the work session. And I know that we do have two news sources who report on all of our meetings. And you also have Facebook, if you want to call that a news source.
I get the Salida standard, hawking that thing all summer at the farmer's market.
But I, I do hear your point, Councilmember Stevens, I hear your concern about, you know, how this has been out in the community, but along with everything that we do here, we cannot spoon feed everything to our constituents. They do have to actively choose their level of participation in what goes on in City Matters.
And we hear about many things that are just in work sessions and council packets. So I would make a motion. I move to approve Resolution 2025-20 of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, accepting the devolution of certain property from the Colorado Department of Transportation to the City of Salida and approving an intergovernmental agreement to effect such property devolution.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Necrotto, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. The motion is to approve Resolution 2025-20 of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, accepting the devolution of certain property from the Colorado Department of Transportation to the City of Salida and approving an intergovernmental agreement to effect such property devolution. Further discussion?
Stevens?
No.
Crutelli?
Yes.
Necrotto?
Yes.
Montana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Wonderful. And we have one more item that we moved up from the consent agenda and that is to approve the contract with Recreation Engineering and Planning for a Marvin Park boat ramp.
Hi, how can I answer questions?
I know, I was curious about the, there was a fiscal impact of $1,470. And I just didn't know what it was for.
Well, the, we have a grant. So I believe up in first pair, first line of the second paragraph under background, we have a grant for $35,395. The bid from R E P was 30, I'm struggling, struggling, 36. I'll be wearing glasses soon enough. Eight sixty-five. So that's the remainder there, that 1,000.
Okay. And then I was curious to hear your, your thoughts about going with Werner to save an $11,265. I know that we've worked with R E P before, but just with tiny budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have my notes here from the interviews that I can share with you, but ultimately, as a professional services agreement, going with the lowest bidder is not necessarily the best approach. And that's why we did interviews, to just see. Werner is, I, I was a ref guide with Nathan Werner and I'm very familiar with who he is. Solid experience in previous position. This is his own new company. Good small access points. He had no team to work with. Most or all boat ramps have been improvements, not original design and not very local. Don't know about relationship with contractors and best project approach of any team. Those are our notes from Werner.
You had some?
I did. Mine was, was similar to, to that in that, you know, the difference between Werner and R E P is 40% more. So, so that's a lot. That's a big step up for this. And then it's about the same going to the next one. So, so your bottom bid and your top bid are way apart. You know, I'm, I'm just back to the thing, why didn't we accept the lower bid? I know that it's not always what you pay for, you have, or you get what you pay for in such like that. As long as you're comfortable with who you guys picked, we'll support that. But this also goes back to staying in, in budget. Is this budgeted somewhere? Are we going, using the money from somewhere else to pay for this?
I think it's grants, right?
Right, no, but the grant didn't cover all of it. I know it's
Yeah, the $1,000 is, is, we, we can cover in other park projects. That is, that, that fund, here's a, that fund, other park projects is directly, they are your fee, your open space fee funds. So the 25 that we just granted is not going to cover this 1,000. It will be some other open space fee that will have to cover this 1,000. But currently we have 400, $440,000 in other park projects. Those fees, that budget line item is going to go towards a contract that I'll bring to you next meeting for the Cleora Park or Confluent Park Development that I know some of you have heard about as well. This is, this is the cycle, right? We collect the fees and then we use the fees to build out the other projects. And so, yeah, this would be an example of a, of what would all in all in the other park project budget not be a huge impact. And that is one of the reasons we went for grants, knowing that this is, this is a project that the community doesn't have a huge appetite for right now, based on the Scout Wave in particular, but that isn't our master plan, a boat ramp at Marvin Park. So we've been pursuing grants and I've brought it actually to the budget. In the budget process, I've brought it to council three times, I think, over the past three years at about $500,000 and it's been cut every year, which I completely understand. And so I am, and I believe I was told, try to find grants. So this is the planning grant, planning and design that we got for most of the funds for, for the planning and design. And then this water plan grant that we received for design, from what we understand, they like to fund construction as well, of things that they funded the design of. So we're trying to kind of line this up, knowing that GOCO right now isn't a huge option for us. But to, to, back to the point, that 1,000 fiscal impact, $1,470 will come out of the Other Park Project Fund as just a, a system development, parks and open space and park development fees that we've collected for other projects.
Might it also be the case that the funder, I mean, if you were to spend $25,600 on the planning piece, the funder might only fund $25,600? It's not like, it's not like we necessarily get to keep the other 10,000 of the grant depending on the funder.
Yeah, I actually didn't look into that.
Yeah.
I highly doubt we would be able to keep the, the balance. They would only reimburse our costs.
It's not like 10,000 that we get to keep. It's 10,000 that the funder gets to keep.
And then diesel, how long?
Hold on one sec, I had, I'll come back to you in a sec. I, I treasure billing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Finance Committee did discuss this and, you know, due to the extreme cost overruns associated with some of the previous river features that the city has worked around, the Finance Committee would like to encourage the council to direct staff to ensure that contractual language is in place so that we can make sure that there's appropriate warranty clauses associated with this construction, limiting additional financial liability that the city might have with regards to this river project, so.
Yeah, so what he said for sure, you know, we definitely need it to be the price that's quoted. But what I was wondering is how long do you think we've needed the boat ramp to be at Marvin Park?
Anecdotally, I've logged a boat out of there 20 years ago. Yeah.
What about 20 years?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I would say 20. I, I mean, since, since the Coors Boat Ramp, which was $8,000, that Coors donated to build the Coors Boat Ramp and has, it's been the Coors Boat Ramp for $8,000 for the last 20 years, 25 years. It failed very quickly just because it wasn't built. It's, the boat ramp should be built, but, and then the temporary boat ramp, that's showing mild success, mild. People don't love it.
I used it on Mother's Day, it was great.
Nice. Oh, yeah, I was there. And then it seems this would be, the, the design concept for this boat ramp is a more, that's why we included AHRA in the, in the selection process. So AHRA, Christie Service from AHRA was a part of the interview team. And we also, before the project went out and we were doing the, our, the request for proposals, their engineer came and gave us suggestions for how to, how to write the request for proposals. But I, and I mean, I understand everyone's concern. Everybody is very shy about kind of river projects right now and I get it.
But we're just looking at design and permitting at this point. We're not looking at implementation of a project. And I could see having a statement like that for implementation, but I think the costs were pretty well spelled out for design and permitting.
There's really, I think it's important to set the, the attitude at the beginning.
Diesel said earlier, you know, you said Werner is the lowest, and there's, there's three pretty, you know, different numbers there. So like, and rest, or R E P has, you know, a lot more, you know, you know, has more time and more, you know, has done these projects way more than, what tells me there is, you know, there might be something that Werner missed at $25,600 that R E P is seeing. And so if you do go with the lowest bid sometimes because they're less experienced at these projects, there's still, there's going to be probably change orders, that's probably, you're going to end up paying more or, you know, you know, more than what they've actually bid, bid on because they didn't see something that a more, you know, reputable company has seen, so.
And, and sort of to add to that, I mean, my thought would be if I had a new company or a relatively new company and I was trying to compete against more established companies with proven track records, I'd undercut them all day long, just trying to get the contract and then, you know, hopefully be able to
Yeah, and, and I mean, we, we consider all that and that's why we do the interviews. It's not a super comfortable position to put yourself in on either end, the bidder or the owner. And I mean, we, it was myself, Nate Mormon, the Parks and Facilities Manager, Zach Ryerson, the Parks Supervisor and Christie Service, the
Corinne.
Corinne, I'm sorry. Corinne, thank you. I was like, I think I'm saying the wrong service. Corinne Service, the, is she deputy?
Park manager.
Park manager for AHRA? And yeah, I mean, just
I would just say, following along with Councilmember Stevens, in procurement, we want to look at the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So it's not just, you know, the cheapest that we get. We want to make sure that they are hitting all of the marks in the rubric that we create, ensuring that they understand what the project is, that they understand what it will take, that they have a team, that they've done this before. So, you know, having been through a lot of So, you know, having been through a lot of bidding processes, we, it's not a great idea to go with just the lowest bid that we receive, because we want to have a full picture of the project. Doesn't mean the lowest bidder is not able to complete it, but it is, in procurement, we can look at it a different way.
Our citywide custodial services bids, out of 10 bids, we got a range of $86,000 to $240,000.
Yep.
Annually, for the same request.
It's in the details.
I had one real quick, though, as far as, just, just so we can also just bring this back to the Coors Boat Ramp, this is in response to that needing to essentially be no longer in the use that it is currently.
So we also have a grant, sort of, this is 49 months that we've been working on, a grant from the Office of Economic.
Development and International Trade.
And International Trade, oh, edit. That we have been working with the county and Beano Vista on a downtown river corridor pedestrian improvement project. So we are going to have about $60,000 to improve the Coors Boat Ramp area, but the improvement is to make it safer for pedestrians, not better for boats. And so, like, it's all this, you know, kind of chess game of moving things around. We really did hope that the temporary boat ramp across the river was going to alleviate a lot of stress from people backing boats down the Coors Boat Ramp. It's done some, but not a lot. And so we do need, feel that we need to do something to the Coors Boat Ramp now, and with this grant, once we hopefully receive the funds. That will be city staff doing that work, the 60,000 is for materials and staff time to make it a hand-launch mostly boat ramp, and you're not backing trailers down, better places to observe the tubers and to hang out, plant some trees, fix some trees down there, put some picnic tables. So, yes, again, this is a wild kind of puzzle to put things together chronologically, so that you don't eliminate something before you have something else. So thank you for pointing that out.
I do, so the boat ramp, not the temporary one, or the one that's across the river that you used this weekend, that one is, was kind of temporary, there's a lot of people parking over there with trucks and trailers after they launch their boat down at the bottom in, in our parking lot. So maybe this one will bring all of that traffic out of town. So my question is, if that traffic is now going to the T-ball field, is that parking lot going to have to be reworked and we're going to have to spend some more money over there, or is that ready to go?
That's the design, so that's what we're going to work on. We've, we've modeled a few different options. Option one, the walking distance from the Marvin, existing Marvin Park Field One parking lot, the big one that you can see from the road, walking distance from there to the T-ball field through the, right down the Field Two first baseline, behind home plate of the Little League Field, is something wild, like closer than the numbers put in, like, like if you go point, numbers is a bad example. The, I'm trying to remember which comparison was made. It is, we could go completely existing and have people park in that Marvin Park parking lot, the big one with trucks and trailers, it's almost already designed, and for boating season, that parking lot is mostly empty. And there's, there could be a design where people park maybe by the boneyard, if we wanted to adapt the boneyard behind Field Two, which is the high school baseball field, we don't think there's enough parking there. There is a possible concept, and we might get some, some phased design documents, where the T-ball field does become a parking lot and the T-ball field moves to another location. I've already been in discussion with the school district about possible places for a T-ball field, and really what it's, what it boils down to is that T-ball, that, that specific use is so underutilized, it's, it's, it's hard to say, right? It's T-ball, it's great, but we can play T-ball on a Little League field. It's, we have a very small window of usage for the T-ball field. There was a rumor that, and I think it was a GOCO-funded project to get the turf at the T-ball field, they have no record of it. So I've received like what it would take, I have, I know what it would take to abandon a GOCO-funded project, and their, their stipulation is, is the new use of greater community good than the existing use? And when I threw this idea, we're talking about doing X, Y, Z, the representative that I talked to for, again, GOCO, which we're not going for, said that they feel that this would be a greater community use for the town, for Salida than a T-ball field. But again, we're not there yet. We will be presenting design to you hopefully in six months, and what do you think about this, or what do you think about that?
Director Post, the, the parking that you referred to there, is that going to be part of this design work that will be completed?
At the T-ball field or at Field One?
Either.
Field One, I mean, a part of the design work, yeah, but there's no design involved, it's already exists, the parking already exists.
Is the parking set up for vehicles with trailers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the super easy version, like, and believe me, I mean, we've talked about, just get a grader down there and make this happen. People can park up at Marvin Park and we can have river access. There's a big beautiful tree down there that no one wants to disturb, and we also want to do it right, so we're going to have it designed. We can't get grant funding for, you know, Diesel and David Lady to go down in loaders and build a boat ramp. Nobody wants to see that.
The Corps might have something to say about that.
Yeah, right.
Does this need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, so the, I think the motion would be to, either to approve or not approve hiring R E P to do, for the, to design and engineering of the boat ramp.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into a contract with R E P for the design and engineering of a Marvin Park boat ramp.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Nakarato, seconded, I believe, by Councilmember Martin, and the motion is to approve entering into a contract with R E P for the design and engineering of a Marvin Park boat ramp. Further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Happenford?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just the encouragement from the Finance Committee to council to have the language added.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got it, we got that, yeah. Okay, um, so, council reports, Councilmember Happenford.
The Finance Committee, me in particular, would like to direct staff to create a resolution to clarify fee waivers, when they will happen, you know, what percentage of affordable housing has to be there, I believe we established that at 50%, so that we can get control of the budget.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, you got support there, anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Cretelli?
Just hope to see everybody at the Fire Department Open House, 11 to 2 this Friday, I'll be there, brats and burgers and all that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fontana?
I do, I was going to also invite everybody to the Fire Station Open House this Friday from 11 to 2. Golf course update, I did, I did miss the meeting, but I did get notes from Chief Johnson. There, the course continues to stay very busy this time of year. The staff is seeing many new faces from around town that did not have memberships last year, and there's lots of new memberships, they are up. There's lots of new people enjoying the course in the city. There are, there's a lot of new sod, the grass is greening up, the water has done wonderful things for out there. Mike Springs is working very hard on the maintenance. There is also a junior camp starting up soon for the course, and that junior camp, I think, will be held on Wednesdays. If anybody's interested, you just call the golf course. The Finance Committee meeting went very well, we had a lot to talk about, especially concerning budget, and so that's why we're all up here talking about budget and staying on it. It was productive. Let's see, Amy and her team has a lot of things going on, the R F P audit, they are going to put out an R F P to, for audit requests, and they're hoping to get that done, I know there is a timeline, I'm sure Amy and staff will stay on that timeline. It will keep them very busy and hard at work. They have also started working on the 2026 budget, and they will continue doing that for quite a while, and so, I know we're still in 2025, but that 2026 budget is coming quickly. So I know her team, the department heads and the staff, she's going to try to help them all stay within budget, and to understand what's happening with our current budget, and if we're going to be over short, and all of those things. So I just have to say, good work to the Finance Department, you guys are doing, doing great, you're killing it in there, so keep up the good work. There are a lot of activities also going on around town, a lot of stuff on the city website, a lot of stuff on the Parks and Recs website, so get on there, if there's something you want to do, it's out there. There are a lot of things going on around town right now, some activities will be fees, and some of them are free, so.
That was all I had.
Thanks. Councilmember Nakarato?
Yes. For the C H A, the board met this month, and not much to report that is relevant to the city of Salida, except that we're told that things with the flour mill continue to move forward, but the board hasn't seen an operations plan for C H A staff, so I don't know what that looks like or what that means. For the Sustainability Committee, we also met in May, and we all heard about the E E C B G Grant Contract Award last night during the work session. We also heard from the consultants working with Excel Partners in Energy, we're not meeting the, the targets that we had hoped for with converting both residences and businesses to renewable sources through Excel. It was suggested that we could do some education around that. I posed, I suggested that it's not probably the city of Salida's place to do that kind of education right now because of the amount of angst that exists with Excel at the moment, so that the partnership is feeling a little bit flat at this time. But we do have one more education session around Partners in Energy coming up for the Sustainability Committee. We also held our Ride and Drive event on May 10th, that was well attended, I'm told it was, it was the best day of some people's lives when they got to drive one of the electric Hummers that was out there.
My kids were thrilled.
So there was a lot of fun test driving going on of electric vehicles, and, and then, yeah, that event and the electronics recycling event, along with cleanup, green up on May 17th were successful. And I am going to host a cheat grass work day, I was hoping maybe cheat grass would come up in the Marvin Park planning, but maybe that's still to come. But I'm going to do a cheat grass work day, base out of the parking lot at the end of M Street at Marvin Park, starting at 3:00 PM on Thursday, and then I'll stick around until about 6:00 PM. Pulling some of the cheat grass that's out there, has to be bagged at this point, it's gone to seed, those seeds, even if you, you know, lay that cheat grass down on the pavement, those seeds will shatter and plant more cheat grass, like, on your pavement. So it has to be bagged, it's, it's going off all over town, I'm happy to show anybody after the meeting what it looks like, we'll go across the street because there's no cheat grass here on the city grounds due to the hard work of staff and volunteers, thank you very much. And so would love to have anybody that wants to and can join me Thursday, 3:00 PM, at the M Street Parking Lot at Marvin Park, I know there's a better name for that parking lot, but I'm going with M Street, thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Martin?
I wanted to say thank you to David Lady and Public Works for getting Oak Street started soon, yeah, just being over in that area, I know it can be frustrating for some of our constituents dealing with detours, and I hope you guys hold your heads high, we'll be sure to defend you, and just thank you for that. Also was going to announce Fire Station Open House, so I will be there as well. And then, upon reading the department updates, happy to see we do have HR manager hired, they're, they're going, and it's great. I was a bit disappointed to see that we lost the $500,000 Dole Grant for the First and D Apartments. I know it was because of the timing of it, I was curious if there is any way we could reapply, is that a thing that can, no? Okay.
That particular, I don't know if Bill's in here, that particular source of funding is, won't be available, but if it, we will continue to look for grant funding to offset the costs, and Art Spaces as well.
Yeah. And for First and D, I did read that we're going to have parking lot there soon. Is there a timeline that we have from Art Space about the project? Because that is part of the reason why we lost the grant, was because of timing, and so curious if we have anything from them.
Yeah, the, the primary reason that the grant was lost had to do with some details of the grant, that the goods needed to be delivered and received by Art Space and the city by the end of the deadline. The items that we had identified that were really the only items that we could pre-order at this stage of design were things like doors, windows, and power transformer equipment, all of which has to be custom designed, custom made, and all of which have many months of lead time of ordering. So we probably, even if we had put the order in, you know, a couple months ago, we probably would not have received those items until the fall, and the deadline has already passed. The upshot of that is, we're not left holding the bill on those orders either. It, it was, it was miscommunication, lack of communication, lack of understanding the details of that particular grant that led to that. In retrospect, there's really nothing we could have done to have spent, spent the money. So it's unfortunate. The other upshot to it is, I think everybody at the state's aware that we had that money rescinded, Art Space now has three really large grant applications in, with the state, and so maybe there's a little bit of sympathy, you know, potentially, that comes with that, and they'll be able to accrue the type of financing to move forward on it. They won't know, they should learn about the first award sometime in June, the rest would kind of trickle in over the rest of the summer, and, but they wouldn't actually be able to start moving on it until sometime in the fall anyways. So that was played quite a bit into the decision on allowing for parking on the, on the space, because there's not going to be any activity until at least the September deadline that we're talking about, so.
And then do they have any timeline for us about anything? I just, we, we signed a contract with them December 2023. They've come into town, we've given them the feedback, this community's given them feedback. I think a parking lot there's, it's, it's just, yeah, it's just kind of disappointing, it's supposed to be workforce housing, and it's going to be a parking lot.
It's very temporary, so that is just, just until September, and the end of the F Street Plaza. They, again, a lot of it comes down to the timing of, of available funding, because Art Space is not paying for this out of their bank account. They are absolutely 100%, well, not 100%, they're a substantial amount dependent on getting grant funding to make this project move forward. And the grants that they have been submitting would make up for well over 50% of the overall cost of the project, and if they get those grants, then they do anticipate moving forward and financing the rest through loans to be able to, to move forward on the project. But if they don't get those grants, or they only get a small portion of those grants, they may have to, to wait and apply when the next windows of opportunity open, which may not be until next year, potentially. So they do have that option for the ground lease on it right now, they're waiting to find out on the grants before they make any decisions on that, and I'm sure if they don't receive those grants, they'll come back to talk to us about what happens from here on out. here on out. It, it's one of the unfortunate parts about affordable housing is that it's very grant-dependent.
Yeah. Um, and Bill, I hope, you know, this is not directed towards you, but it's, uh, I mean, they've, they got the $500,000 grant, right? And then I don't know what they've used their time for, I'm aware of some of how they've used their time, um, but they did have the grant, they had the grant, they could have done it, they could have used it, and now they, we lost it, now they're seeking more grants, it's gonna take more time, so I guess if we could have them provide us a timeline of what we can expect from them, I would really appreciate that, I don't know if anybody else would want to support that.
Yeah, absolutely can provide, um, information on the level of design and all, to clea, to be clear, the grant was to the city of Salida, and the reason that we're, where, where we at, where we are at now is because we had to go through our own public process last summer to get council sign-off on the design. And then design takes many, many months, and so we weren't, uh, Art Space was not at a place at design to even, um, be able to contemplate utilizing that, that grant, which was only for materials and infrastructure.
Okay.
So that, that's the reason, like, it, it couldn't have been used for just anything, it had to be used for stuff that you have to be at a certain level of the design in order to be able to order. So it, it's, it was really a timing issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, a few things, um, again, I want to give a shout out to David Lady and the, you know, the city for, you know, using that time, that, uh, construction was down due to weather for the, the intersections downtown to move over and take care of a few other, you know, infrastructure, um, issues that were going on, couple leaky, um, valves that got replaced that were supposed to be done, like, later on in the, in the year, in the summer, I'm not sure exactly when they were actually slated to, but they were able to move over while there, had some downtime and take care of a couple issues in, in the city, city, um, some leaky valves that were leaking up through into the street. Um, I know there's some birds that are probably kind of a little upset about that, losing their bird bath for a while, but, um, I think that was, that was a great, you know, transition, a pivot over there and get those things taken care of while the, while the crew was down, down there in that area, and, um, so, good job on, yeah, good job on just, you know, keeping those guys busy, getting things done down there. Um, see, uh, just a little update on the Post Board, um, our current chairperson had, has, had to resign to, you know, just for personal reasons, uh, just kind of needed to step back and, and focus on her own business, uh, her own, here in town, so, um, we will be, I guess, announcing, uh, for, for a replacement of that chairperson to, for the Post Board, so if any, you know, to get that word out there that we are looking for somebody to, to, to join the Post. Um, uh, a couple of updates on the airport, you know, all, you know, we got a couple of big projects going on up there, extension of the, of the taxiway, and also, uh, fuel farm projects going on, um, which I think, I think the taxiway came in kind of under budget, um, or at budget, um, was, was a reasonable bid. Uh, the fuel farm project came in way overbid, so no, no bids were accepted, they're kind of, um, we did try to negotiate, uh, with the lowest bidder, but were unsuccessful, so I think we're just gonna go back to the drawing board with, with those and try and, you know, figure out a way to get those costs down and come back and, at a later date and, and, um, try and get those moving again, but right now, yeah, bids were just, you know, just, um, way over, way over, overbid, over the, um, the cost that we were willing to, to pay anyway, so, um, that and, um, uh, has there been an update on the deer situation in town lately?
Not a while.
Not a while, yeah, I just, I've had a few people, neighbor approach, so that's, told them I'd shoot it out there, kind of see where, where that sits.
No pun intended. No pun intended. I wasn't, I didn't mean to giggle, it's just, yes. One of my favorite topics.
There's no shooting.
Maybe we can, we can bring that back.
Yeah, maybe.
We can, I don't know that there's been any change with Governor Polis still in office, I don't think anything will change from Parks and Wildlife, and they're still not our deer, so, um, happy to reach out to Sean Shepherd, but, um, I think unless some policy changes at the state level, we won't have any different information. I don't know if they have a deer census scheduled.
What about a deer evolution?
I know. No, 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 no. No.
Yeah, we will, I, I could get behind that.
If I hear anything new, I will absolutely pass it along.
Pass it along, okay.
Absolutely. I apologize.
Just, I would invite you to revisit the minutes from the, and maybe we can do some searching, or I'll search my brain and try to remember when that was, but I did some deep digging into it and then reported back on it to council that there's just nowhere for it to go.
Yeah.
Essentially, it's another one of those state-level policy issues that we are, um, stuck with.
Question, how did, what, how do we think the deer got here in the first, was it predators pushing deer into, into the town?
You should read, um, Sean Shepherd's article too, in the Salida Standard, he wrote a great article as well.
Yeah, I can link it. A work session from April 15th of last year.
Definitely discussed.
That's why they pay you the big buck.
Seriously.
Yeah.
If you want to switch notebooks.
Um, that, and, um, yeah, just, um, with the summertime coming up, water's ri, rising fast, um, uh, just, yeah, just be careful out there, all you recreational goers getting on the river, say it's gonna, we're not gonna, looking like we're not gonna see, you know, the peaks that we saw last year, but I think it's gonna be a fun, fun, sporty, uh, raft season. Uh, if you're down in the gorge, look out for the new, for the new rapid that has, um, that has, um, fallen off the side of the cliff and rested itself at the base of Grateful Dead going into Sledgehammer. Uh, there's new rocks in the river, they're creating hazards down there, if anybody has, uh, heard of that, but, um, um, yeah, so be careful there, it's a big undercut rock, three pretty good-sized rocks, some already, if you're not low water, some rafts have already...
Which, which is not part of Salida's jurisdiction.
Raft, oh, yeah. If you're going down there to raft, which I, I, uh, I, um, it's one of my favorite sections to raft, but, um, uh, other than that, um, yeah, volunteer for FIBARK, fibark.com.
Okay, I just had a few things tonight, um, Tina and I had a chance to meet with a group of citizens on this Makerspace, it was just a, a first meeting, I think they're gonna pursue 501(c)(3) status, I encouraged them to reach out to the Community Foundation. The biggest challenge they're, they're running into is, you're really trying to find a space, and a lot of communities will have abandoned warehouses, industrial facilities, and there's not a lot, whole lot of that here, but, just in the early stages, but I think, hopefully they'll be able to gather some momentum, and I really appreciate the, the work Tina did in terms of working with them. I also want to thank, uh, Poppy, we had that C M L dinner last week, and she was, it went off without a hitch, it was great to have the opportunity to, to network with people from neighboring communities and, um, really appreciate all the work she put into that. Um, had a chance last Thursday to be part of the Arbor Day celebration at Longfellow, and we planted a tree, um, and it was fun to be there with a fourth grade class, and some of my most favorite constituents are, uh, the kids, um, but I digress. Um, on the subject of kids and family, I went, they had a family day at the gun shop, gun awareness, gun safety, and they suckered the mayor into getting up into the dunk tank, and if anyone remembers Saturday, it was cloudy and breezy and, uh, I, after the third time, I was, uh, not quite hypothermic, but I think with the fourth or fifth time it might have happened. Uh, and I really appreciate how fire was there, EMS, uh, law enforcement, so, um, really appreciate.
In case you passed out.
What?
In case you passed out.
Exactly. Well, they weren't, they weren't there to help me. I'm sure they would have, begrudgingly. Um, and then I just had one last thing, and that was after the meeting last night with E T C, I did reach out to Joe Smith, the, uh, the board chair of, um, the school, and they are gonna bring this up at their next board meeting, and we'll, we'll circle back. Uh, and then, uh, we have our treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the March City Sales Tax Collections increased by about $45,000 or 5.9% compared to March of 2024. The city's portion of the Chaffee County Sales Tax Collections increased by about $17,000 or a 6.5% increase over March 2024. In total, sales tax receipts are 6% higher for March and 3.7% higher for year-to-date, and that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you very much. Um, Nina, do we have anything from you?
Nothing from me tonight, I'll see you all in person in two weeks.
Thank you so much. Um, and then if we, department updates, and one request I had on that is just that question around First Indy, the parking lot, when people will be able to use it, you're gonna get there.
Boom, right there, first thing.
Awesome.
Okay.
So you're so many steps ahead of me.
I'm trying so hard. Um, as a reminder, this is a temporary parking lot, it will be used for affordable workforce housing once everything comes together, so it's a temporary parking lot.
You write that 100 times on the board.
Please remember that it's temporary.
Temporary.
Temporary, okay. We're really, really, really happy that we can provide this to the community when F Street is closed to vehicular traffic and, uh, parking spaces are not available downtown, so we're really happy that we can do this, but it's temporary. So there are approximately 34, um, marked spaces where people can park in diagonally, there's one way, uh, it's off of the alley, turn into the alley, you're turning right immediately, it's all one way, you go around a loop, there, uh, horizontal or, um, diagonal, uh, parking there, and you go out the opposite way. So there's opportunity for people with larger vehicles to pull into the side as well, so we are hopeful that this, um, helps alleviate some of the issues that we have with parking downtown during the summer temporarily.
Temporarily.
Will there be any overnight parking there, in camp?
We're gonna keep everything the same.
I counted 16 temporaries in your presentation.
I'm trying really hard, I just don't want to yell, I don't want to get yelled at in September, um, or whenever we, um, are able to build something on it. A, a special shout out to Mike, Jerry, and Rocky with Public Works who reprioritized their week to grate it, asphalt it, put in all of the concrete blocks, I really appreciate, um, everything that they did to get that prepped for. This weekend, we are placing some boulders in the lot tomorrow just to, um, uh, keep safe some of the poles there, make sure people don't drive in places where they shouldn't, so those will be placed tomorrow, so it'll be ready for Memorial Day weekend, Sun Fest, um, all of the good things that are happening this weekend, so please utilize that. Um, just a quick update that, um, I did attend the Supreme Court oral arguments in Colorado Springs last week in the Hobbs versus Salida and Christie Dune acting in her formal capacity. Um, we, I don't know, it's very weird to hear your name in the Supreme Court, I'm just gonna say. Um, Erica Romberg, our, one of our city attorneys, did a great job presenting our arguments to the Supreme Court, it's really unclear when they'll come back with a ruling, and I will obviously let you all know once that happens, and that is the end of what I have.
Great, thank you. Um, all that remains is a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, thanks, everybody.
Woo. I'm sure.